That's my shirt.
I have. I swear, I had to go home to that word. The wall and then.
I thought you said later.
I did one time.
Okay, it's on you pretty much.
You watch a lot over. We're still waiting on it. Okay.
Larry, can you hear me?
I hear you, sir.
All right.
We're glad you're here with us.
Thank you.
So we have Commissioner Harris and we also have Commissioner Tucker on board now, is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Well, there's nobody here for me to pound this mallet with, so unless I hit myself on the head with it. We'll go ahead and start our regular Surrey County Board of Commissioners meeting tonight. Welcome everybody that chimed in. I feel like first thing that we need, the first order of business that we need to do is have an implication and also the pledge of allegiance, and I think Commissioner Marion's gonna lead us in there.
Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking your blessings upon this meeting. Be with each and every one of us that we've been, will do your will, give us the wisdom and the knowledge to do what is pleasing to you. Be with all the ones that are affected by this virus, dear Lord, be with each family that's been affected, be with each business that's been affected. Have your loving arms around all those families that have lost loved ones and are going through this. Be with our military at home and abroad while they're protecting our country. Be with our officials. Be with them the wisdom to lead our country in ways you see fit. We know by no man, one man cannot fix this, but through your grace and wisdom, we know you'll pull us through. I'll again ask you for many blessings that you bestowed upon us, these many blessings we ask in thy name. Amen.
Amen. Please recite me the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the land of the United States.
Study.
The United States. To the great love of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible. Thank you, Commissioner Marion, for that prayer, for leading us in our pledge. The next part that we need to cover is our rules of procedure amendments, and we're gonna turn that over to our county attorney, Ed Woolz.
I got a screen, I can't see. Ladies and gentlemen, I've sent a late afternoon email out with further revisions to the rules of procedure. Primarily, I wanted to make sure it was abundantly clear that every remote participant at a board meeting counts for the vote and counts toward the quorum. That is something that was not quite clear enough going through the revision. Another thing I wanted to make sure is that when, okay, your typical policy is if a listener fails to vote or refuses to vote and is not excused, it counts as a yes. And I wanted to make it clear that the remote participant is disconnected through a technical glitch, that the vote is not going to be a yes vote, it's gonna be an excused vote. Abstained vote. Major changes of what I did today as opposed to what's been circulated to the board previously. And I, it's my opinion that what the, the changes that have been proposed that I would ask you to approve tonight permits this board to convene, subject to open meeting laws and disclosures to the the media list, to operate remotely and to constitute a quorum and to manage business regardless of whether you're in your chambers or anywhere else. Y'all have questions?
So we need to, we need to make a motion.
Yes, sir. I would suggest that you move to approve the rules of procedure for the Surrey County Board of Commissioners as consistent with the draft that was circulated late afternoon today. And that's what was even received a clean copy.
My, my first question was Commissioner Tucker and Commissioner Harris, was y'all able to hear, hear what Mr. Woolz said?
Chairman, Johnson, I can hear you perfectly fine. I struggled to hear Mr. Woolz for whatever reason.
About Commissioner Harris?
I could hear every word loud and clear.
Okay. Commissioner Goins, are you, are you able to make some type of clear it up a little bit for Commissioner Tucker and, and make a motion?
Yeah. What this does is this kinda, this kinda cleans up the language in our, in our rules about you folks that are not at the meeting being able to be counted as a quorum. And then if you were blocked, if you have technical difficulty, if you dropped out and weren't able to vote, then that, that would count as a, as an abstain, is that right? So that's, that's the change in the wording in that, in those rules of procedures.
You good with that?
Yep, yes, sir.
Alright, so it's gonna require us to take action so we can proceed with this, the new rules or amended rules of procedure for this meeting. And affect this meeting, so we're going to do that currently.
I'll make a motion that we accept the amended rules and, and rules of procedure for the Surrey County Board of Commissioners as set to us this afternoon by our county attorney, Mr. Woolz.
I have a motion from Commissioner Goins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Marion, is there any discussion on this or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
It sounds that that's unanimous, so we'll go ahead and move on to our next part of our meeting tonight, and that's the approval of the agenda. I think all of you should have that in front of you, so we're looking for action there, approval of our agenda this evening. Looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda as presented.
I have a motion from Commissioner Tucker. I have a sec, I need a second from.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Goins. Any discussions or questions pertaining to the approval of our agenda? If none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous also. Our next, our next on the program is approval of the March 16th, 2020 meeting minutes. Looking forward to action there to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the minutes of March 16th, 2020.
I have a motion from Commissioner Goins and a second from Commissioner Johnson. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. I think that was unanimous also. Thank you. Our next is our consent agenda you have in front of you, we have one, two, three, four, five, six bullet points pertaining to various things that we don't have to do any discussion to make these things happen or look at. So looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda. Motion to approve. Motion from Commissioner Marion and a second from.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Goins. All in favor, I'm sorry, any, any questions or discussions about approval of the consent agenda? If none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That's unanimous also. So now on our program, our next is for our open forum. Here in, here in our commissioners' room, there's no public attendance here, but I think we have possibly some attendees at our service center that might be able to come up. So we'll open the open forum at this time. If anyone is there that wants to share something with the board, to address the board, we would ask that you would state your name and also telephone number and limit your time to just a few minutes. So this time on the agenda for open forum is now open. Sure. My understanding, there's nobody at the service center, and so we will go ahead and close the open forum set the time for our commissioners' meeting. Our next part of our meeting will be with Ed Woolz, our county attorney. Mr. Woolz.
Gentlemen, about a year ago, the board was requested to approve an easement over our convenience center in Salone to provide access for a fellow that, that lives in Paulies Island, South Carolina. The company is, or the property is owned by an outfit called Silkworm Associates. You granted that access, he constructed his driveway and things have been going well. It's, his driveway is called Hamilton Lane, and he subsequently has requested the ability to gate a portion of it. The driveway passes by the convenience center entrance, and apparently lots of folks, or some folks, have been just parking in his driveway instead of going to the convenience center. And he would like, he asked for a license to put a gate up. And I prepared an amendment to the easement that we granted last year, which would allow this guy to put a gate up to restrict access from the convenience center to his residence, but it would also give unfettered access to Surrey County. We would have a combination or a key lock, or a key to the lock, depending on how the gate is secured. And we reserve the right to take the gate down if Silkwood or Silkworm fails to comply with the lease as amended. So I really don't see any downside to the county, it gives this guy some privacy, and I, I see no difficulty with it. The Public Works is good with the proposed plan and Don Mitchell has weighed in on it, and I, I would ask that the board approve this amended easement.
He's putting all the cost, right?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner. Chairman Johnson?
Yes, go right ahead.
I'll just add to that briefly, that, that, that's in the East District. I was called by Mr. Gary Thomas, the owner of Silkwood, Silkworm. And actually, he just wanted a little privacy. And we went back to look at the easement that goes by our recycling center in Salone. And it appears that he's got a few folks that go on by the recycling center, which basically is his property. And we just didn't really see any downside because we don't have any reason to go beyond that point. And certainly, if there's no reason that we couldn't change our mind someday, it would certainly be a good neighbor to this citizen. I found Mr. Thomas to be a perfect gentleman in all of our dealings with him on the previous right of ways concerning this property at our Salone Recycling Center. And so I met with Don Mitchell and Jessica Montgomery, and we surveyed the property, looked at the proposed site where he had flagged that he would like to have a gate whereby we would always have access if we ever needed to go beyond that point. And I thought it was a reasonable request, and I don't see how I can hurt the county in any way, and I only saw where it might be beneficial to Mr. Thomas. And I, I am fully in agreement with allowing him to put up this gate. And we did certainly want our county attorney, Ed Woolz, to weigh in on it, and he has. And I haven't talked to Ed about it, just except from what I've heard him say tonight. But it sounds like he's good with it, and if he's good with it, I'm good with it. And I'm a little bit, I didn't hear everything really well, but if you're prepared to accept a motion to move forward with this recommendation, I am certainly prepared to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, before, alright, well, I'm gonna go ahead and be you chiming in now. I'm gonna give Commissioner Harris an opportunity if he has anything to ask or say before that, before I take that motion.
Yes, sir.
Aye. Can you hear me, Larry?
Yes.
I'm gonna defer to Commissioner Tucker on that and take his recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
And I will second that.
Alright, alright, we'll get to that just before we, I'm gonna go and get the comments a little bit before the horse. You got any questions or.
No, sir.
About this matter?
None.
Alright, I have a motion from Commissioner Tucker, is that correct, Mr. Tucker?
That's correct.
To approve, to approve this Silkworm Properties easement for the gate. And I saw we have a second from Commissioner Harris. Is any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? I believe that's unanimous. So that's business is taken care of, thank you. Chris Canall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First time I have is a memo that I drafted to the board on April the 7th regarding upcoming calendar program changes. One is related to the board meeting calendar, and it's recommended that we cancel the May 4th, 2020 board meeting. Related to the 2020 board budget calendar, we've already decided by a voice vote earlier to cancel tomorrow night's work session, we just need to officially, tonight, that's for April 1st. Also recommend you cancel the April 28th budget work session. And one of those cancellations to schedule a May 14th work session that will begin at approximately 9:30 in the morning and could be a half day or all day session depending on the subject matter. And finally, it's recommended after discussing this with Parks and Recreation Director to cancel the summer recreation program this summer. Typically, they would need to start filling jobs this month. And with the uncertainty about what will be eligible to, to occur in the next few months, it would be better now just to go ahead and cancel, even though that's an unfortunate thing that we have to do. I will say regarding the May 4th meeting, you know, there's a lot of hope that, that the economy will be back up and running in some form or fashion by the end of the month. But even with that said, and just talking to various officials, there probably will still be some restriction, even if that happens on mass gatherings and social distance, there'll be some social distancing requirements. So I think it best just to cancel that meeting and meet the 3rd Monday in, in May as scheduled.
Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Tucker, were y'all able to, were y'all able to hear Chris's?
Yes, sir, loud and clear.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we heard him.
Okay, looking for a motion to cancel regular board meeting on May the 4th, cancel our work sessions on the 21st and the 28th, and also cancel the summer recreation program that we had planned, scheduled for the summer. And we're to schedule a May the 14th work session at 9:30 a.m. here at the historic courthouse somewhere. And we'll also schedule, hopefully to have our regular board meeting on, on the 3rd Monday in May. Looking for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Have a motion from Commissioner Marion and a, and a second from. Second from Commissioner Goins. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
That appears unanimous also. Chris?
The next two items, I'm gonna ask Don Mitchell, Surrey County's Facilities Director, to come forward, and they're related to property offers on properties Surrey County owns at 120 Crosswinds Lane and 118 Kaola Lane.
I've received an offer of $1,000 for a foreclosed property located at 120 Crosswinds Lane in Mount Airy, that's in the Flat Rock area. It's a, a mobile home park, this is a vacant lot. I think it's got a frame of a trailer that was, at one time, I guess burned, the frame is still there. And I had an offer of $1,000 for this property. The tax value is 13,500, but of that 13,500, 3,500 is listed for like an outbuilding, and there's not really anything on that property. This is, it's just a growed up lot in a mobile home development.
Don, I have one question for you.
Yes.
Does this offer come from a neighbor or?
Yes, it, I sent out, I sent out letters to all the adjoining property owners. Last time we had a property, foreclosed property, it was, you know, asked that I contact the adjoining property owners, and I did. I sent out 11 letters and got this one, one offer, and it was from the adjoining, one of the adjoining property owners.
It says here that you even have, we had fore sales signed on it also.
Yes.
For a good while?
Yes, at least, at least a month.
Any other, any other questions for Don?
That would be subject to all the proper notifications in the media as well as the notification of adjoining landowners, is that correct?
Yes, it would have to be advertised for a 10-day upset period. Yes, and what we, the successful bidder would have to pay the cost of the advertising.
I, I'm aware.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Joining landowners have been notified.
Yes, sir, I sent a letter to all of them, Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
This resides in, looks like the Mount Airy district. Are you and, are you and/or Mr. Goins aware of this property and what it looks like and the circumstances and good with this?
What's that?
I, I've actually, I've actually had read, rode over to the Crosswinds, I saw, I was on Quaker Road to the left on the, on the upper couple miles, and it is a larger area of mobile homes. I would, I, in my opinion, if somebody wanted to purchase this property and improve it, which I'm sure they would, and they won't buy it, yes, it would be a plus, it would be a plus for Surrey County. And so I, I'm aware of it, Commissioner Tucker, and probably would be favorable and go ahead and making this step to, to sale, and of course, like I said, it would be subject for upset bids, such as that. Any other commissioners want to chime in?
I'm good, I'm good. Yeah. I'm like you, they gotta pay, they're like, play and have that old trailer removed and that's gonna be another cost to them.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be a cost to them of cleaning it up, moving old burnt down trailers, such as that, in our opinion. So I'd go ahead and look for some action on this, if you, if y'all also choose that we'll go and sell it. I'll, I'll make, I'll make that motion that, that we accept this $1,000 offer, and it'd be subject for upset bid and all through the proper channels. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a second from Commissioner Goins. Do you have any other questions or discussions?
Yeah, we need to back up and declare a surplus first. Yeah, just go ahead and change your.
Okay, my understanding is that we need to surplus it first, so I'll make that up. The motion will include that we surplus this property that is foreclosed and that we, that we accept the $1,000 offer from this individual subject to upset bid and all through the proper channels. And do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Goins.
Is this the, well, is this the property for the 1,000 or the 3,300?
This is the 1,000.
The 1,000. 1,000 from Lisa Johnson.
Yeah, right, Crosswinds Lane.
Yeah, it's a trailer parked up off Quaker Road in Flat Rock.
I know, I know where it's at.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? If none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Appears that's unanimous, Don, and passes. Okay?
Thank you, I have one other fore closed property where I've received an offer. For this is, the location is 118 Koala Lane in Mount Airy. It's listed as 0.92 acres, so it's not quite an acre. The tax value is $14,300, and I received an offer of $3,300 for this property. And like the Crosswinds Lane, I sent out letters to all the adjoining property owners, and this was the only offer I received.
I have a question before we do make a motion or anything, or even, did a joining property owner make this offer? Before we even disclose the name? Can't, can't we?
I wouldn't disclose.
Wouldn't, okay, alright.
Fairly positive it wasn't a joint property owner, I can.
Well, that's fine, I was.
It's it, we're gonna join a property owner.
Oh, it does, okay, alright. Alright. Before we take action, does anybody have a question or more for Don? On this particular property up above Pine Ridge, I believe it is, close to the water shade. Probably close to the state line, I believe, Virginia State Line. This is, this, this will be something that we have to surplus also?
Yes, yes, sir, I am a. Yes, it would have to be surplus.
Have to be surplus. It seems to me a decent offer. Commissioner Tucker?
Yes, sir.
Any comment, any question?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, Commissioner Harris?
I'm fine.
Okay. Commissioner Marion?
I'm good.
Commissioner Goins?
I'm good.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make the motion that we surplus this property and also accept this bid of $3,300 on the individual. And that, and we'll go through the same criteria of subject, upset bid and the, and which the, those who upset the bid would have to pay all advertising and other legal fees pertaining if they do. So the motion's been made, looking for a second. Second from Commissioner Goins. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 It appears that's unanimous also. Okay, Don?
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to Chris, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item I have is actually two requests, we have two tenants, one at the Elkin Center, Workforce Unlimited, and the other is Mount Airy Indoor Soccer and Sports LLC, they lease the gymnasium and playing fields, the Westfield Community Center, both send in requests requesting that we forgive their lease payments for a period of time. Workforce Unlimited, the Elkin Center, I believe, was requesting a relief from their April payment, and Mount Airy Indoor Soccer and Sports LLC was requesting three months beginning in April, so April, May, and June. In, in discussing this with the county attorney, because we are a unit of government and we are leasing property, we don't, do not have the ability to waive or forgive a lease or rent payment. What you can do is you could restructure the lease if they pay it later, or pay a higher monthly rate going forward, or pay it at the end, whatever the scenario may be. But we do not have the ability to forgive it.
Okay, I'll ask again, Commissioner Tucker and Commissioner Harris, were y'all able to understand when Chris shared?
Yes, sir.
I heard every.
Okay. It, it appears that we don't have the authority to forgive the rent or the lease payments. We do have options about, in a sense, deferring, I guess would be the, the, the option that we could, would take, and so I'm open for questions or discussions before we take action.
We can amend it, we can amend it and, and, and just say, drop it, you know, if you want to push one out, or if you want to cut it in half, or you can reduce, you can reduce that rent for.
Anything that the board does to revise the existing lease needs to be by amendment, just so it's transparent and everybody understands what's happened. What I thought may be appealing to the board is permit however many months are needed to clean the problem up, and just kick it on the rear, the last month of the lease, so the entire parental obligation would have been paid, just paid in a little different order. Again, you can extend, you can, you could reduce the, the amount of the rent in your discretion, but it needs to be by amendment that the board passes.
I understand.
I feel, I feel it'd be a good amendment to add it on to the end of the lease, basically for Mount Airy Sports Soccer.
Okay.
I talked with Don today, and the indoor soccer people have asked to go ahead and take the entire property over. Currently, the only thing that they're, they don't have access to is the cafeteria, and the Kiwanis, or whoever was there, have disbanded, and the indoor soccer people are willing to accept the cafeteria and to look after the entire property. They would assume the obligation of all maintenance except for the wellhouse. They would take the septic tank, we would look after the well to make sure that the place has water, and all of the maintenance other than like four items, fix a urinal, the new, there's a new roof over the two restrooms, but there's a condensation issue, the acid, that be cleared up, a, a, a new drop ceiling heater, gas heater thing to replace a, a unit that's out.
Lights.
Yeah, fix the lights in the gymnasium, either replace or repair, so that they're, they're working, and in exchange for that, the rent would drop from eight hundred to three hundred dollars a month, but the county will be relieved of the obligation to get up. And I have prepared a lease to that effect.
Well, I, I, I think we were just waiting to, for you to be prepared for, we, we, I think it's a consensus among the board, and that, 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 that new lease has been discussed amongst the board and was willing, consensus.
And I did, I did one today, so Don hasn't.
Okay, so maybe in our, whenever we begin the deal, and if you got it all signed, or whatever's legal, we're prepared to take action on that. Okay, anybody have a thought about, Commissioner Marion suggested that we defer to the end of the lease?
That was before our county attorney suggested what we might, might better do.
You got one for workforce, you got one for.
Well, how about extending workforces till the end of the lease?
What's workforce pay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I'm like a common man, I, I'm able to hear everyone perfectly well, I'm not able to hear Mr. Woltz real well. You know, I, I'd love to just say that I would be in favor of making some kind of arrangement to ease people's pain that are leasing properties from the county, but, you know, this is not the only, as you all know, the only lease agreements that the county of Surrey is currently involved in, though we much appreciate all of our rentals, renters, and business partners. You know, we're just still reeling from the beginning, I think, the beginning of what is, in my opinion, going to be a journey on just how this county, along with many other municipalities facing the same issue across this great nation, on how we react to the needs of our citizens, not only the ones doing business with us as business partners, in this case that we're talking about tonight, renters and lease agreements, but for the citizens as a whole. I mean, you know, we, we're gonna have a lot of things, in my opinion, that we're gonna have to address in the next coming weeks, months, hopefully, I'm reluctant to say years, that may change the way we have done business normally. I'm just a little reluctant tonight, just speaking for one person, me, to, to take any action to give any relief or any un, you know, without, without, I'd just like to sit down and study this thing a little bit more, and I think it's just a little quick to start waiving fees or lease, lease payments, or working out arrangements whereby we can reduce them somehow, when we have talked about that statutorily, it's not something that the county can actually do, I mean, this is the money that goes to the county, which basically is the money that goes to the fact, the taxpayers of Surrey County. I just think it's a little premature to address these kind of reductions, as I say, these are not the only people that we're doing business with, I would certainly not want to do it for a couple of them and then not be able to do it for all of them in the future. I think we're a little bit early in the game to be accepting these kinds of requests and act, or at least acting on them, we can accept them at any time, of course, but I'm, I'm, I for one am just a little reluctant to work out any kind of lease reductions, simply because, you know, we're in, early in the game, the COVID nineteen impact is going to be certainly greater than what we've been able to see so far, it will go on for some time, and I'm just a little reluctant to, to make any, to take any action on these kinds of requests at this time, considering all the things that the county may have to take up in the future regarding just what kind of dire straits we may or may not be in, so I'm just saying, I, I'm a little reluctant to do that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I appreciate your comments, I have a question for you, I, I don't think we discussed the question right yet, but we did mention deferment. How's your feelings on deferring payment?
Well, well, as I said, and I apologize, I was unable to hear Mr. Woltz in his entirety. I did hear a little bit about deferring and maybe adding it at the end of the year, I assumed those payments would be larger payments at some time, but in the, at the end of the game, until the lease had expired, I assumed that the county would, would hold the lease ors responsible for the lease agreement until the lease agreement was over, even if they adjusted the amount of payments that were to be made temporarily at some point, the amount in full would be received until the lease is terminated, is that correct, Mr. Woltz?
Yes, sir.
You, you said, yes, sir?
Yes.
Okay, well, I mean, you know, if, if they think deferring payments is something that they would be interested in, I would suggest we talk to them about it, because actually, they didn't ask for deferred payments, they asked for forgiveness, forgiving of the payment, and that may be something they are or are not interested in, I will not sit here and say I would be opposed to that, but I think, I am opposed to just forgiving the, the terms of the lease for those or for anyone at this point, until we see where we're gonna go. If someone wanted to confer with them and see if changing the amount of payments to make balloon payments on the end would be something that they thought would be helpful, I don't know that I would be opposed to that, but I don't know that they can answer that question here tonight at this meeting this quick.
Possibly so. Comment from Commissioner Harris or question?
Well, I, I agree with Commissioner Tucker, they, they, they may not be interested in it at all, and, you know, it's, it's, one is an apple and one is an orange, and, you know, and he also, I agree with him in the fact that we do have other leaseholders like the Shiki's Restaurant in Elkin, that obviously, you know, their restaurant is obviously shut down outside of carryout, but, you know, so there's some complicating factors to this request, and it seems to me a little, to me, for, there would be, need to be a little bit more investigation into, you know, and what we are, if in fact the leaseholders are inclined to change the request to a, to a deferment.
Okay. Commissioner Goleyns?
Well, I'm good with a deferment, I think if, if anybody else is, and then we could look at the Westfield property as, as the new contract has been submitted.
Well, that's correct.
And that would offer him some relief.
Okay, we have, we have two that would probably like to sit on it for a little bit longer and get more information so far.
That would be, that would be good for me, or defer or wait till we find out from other lease, leases?
Well, there is others, so I see, I see their point, I do.
I see their point.
I think we, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Harris and Tucker, that maybe we could hold off a couple of weeks or a month and see what's, see what's happening, you know, we, we've got plenty of time to defer these payments to a later date, or.
Well, gentlemen, it appears to me that we will probably, will, we won't, we won't take any action on it tonight, and that we will ask the county staff to tell these two places of business that we did take action, that we, we need, and the rules is that we, under the current lease agreements that we cannot forgive, discuss other things such as deferments or other things, and see if they're interested, and, and by all means knowing that we have more than those two, so, Chris, I think we're gonna not take any action on it tonight.
Okay, and we will follow up with both tenants and bring back answers to the next meeting.
But also tell them that we understand their situation, as do everybody else's, and we'll, we'll try, we'll, we'll see if we, what we can do at some point, we'll see, okay?
Okay. Yeah, we can do that.
It's been suggested from our county attorney, gentlemen, that we'll compile a list of all of our tenants of Surrey County, just that, that way, that way we'll know, so, that way we know how many we got, too. Thank y'all, and Chris, we'll move on to the next, please.
Next item, in my information, is a memo from Mark Willis, the opioid response director. He's requesting permission to apply for a U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant Substance Abuse Site-Based Program, that's a mouthful, but in a, in a nutshell, this would provide financial and technical assistance to develop, implement, and expand comprehensive efforts to identify, respond to, treat, and support those impacted by illicit opioids, stimulants, and other drugs of abuse. The total award for the grant for a county our size is six hundred thousand dollars, and would be available between October first of this year and September thirty first of two thousand twenty-three. There is no matching requirement from the county for the grant, so it's a one hundred percent grant. If you remember at the retreat, Mark discussed with you a number of initiatives he hoped to implement, this grant would cover what he mentions here about the analyst position. Last week, I also asked him, as I'm working through the recommended budget for the board preparation in a couple of months, we were talking about also trying to address some of the transportation issues we have for folks trying to get to treatment. With the situation we're in now, I, I discussed with Mark, and we looked into the grant paperwork, and that's also an eligible expense, and in talking to Mark today, we feel like it's our best option moving forward, which would help us with our budget preparation for fiscal year twenty-one, would be to roll that into this grant application, instead of budgeting for it in the county's general fund. So tonight, I'm just asking, even though his, his memo's asking otherwise, just for the board to approve applying for the grant, and if it's awarded, we'll bring it back later for the board to consider, to accept it, and what we would apply for is the analyst position as well as funds for the transportation needs that we have.
My understanding, Chris, is asked that we give permission to Mark Willis to apply for a six hundred thousand dollar grant, one hundred percent funded, no county match, and then we discuss later the details of the functions of it, but tonight, we give him, give him permission to, to apply for the grant, so that's, that's what we have to, to work with, so.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we allow Mr. Willis to apply for the federal grant as proposed by our county manager.
I have a motion from Commissioner Goleyns. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Harris. Any questions or discussions pertaining to this, this grant application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll just say that I am all in favor of moving forward with permission to apply. I will say that, again, as all you guys know, that sometimes these grants come with, they're almost like seed money, they get you involved in a situation to where you employ enough people, or buy enough stuff, or put enough mechanism into place, it's, it's almost like bait, you can't, you can't hardly swallow it, and you can't hardly turn it loose, but I think if we have an opportunity to discuss the details of that later, I certainly would be in favor of moving forward with at least applying for the grant, and then I hope that the board would have an opportunity to fully investigate the terms of the grant, to, to see how many people would be in place, how many vehicles might have to be bought, and how, what the duration of that grant might be, before we actually decided to just go full steam ahead into it. I hope the board would get that opportunity later, but I have absolutely no problem with moving forward on applying.
Well, Commissioner Tucker, I believe Chris has already answered that, yes, they will be come back to the board again, if, if we do get, if we do, if we do get the grant. If we do, if we do get the grant, we will have the opportunity to discuss whether we will accept it or all the terms and everything involved in it. So, any other questions or concerns? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That appears that that's unanimous also, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item I have is a request from Mount Airy City Schools. Typically, this time of year, one or more of the three school systems here in the county will request that any special capital funds that the board allocated to them, and special capital funds are those funds that are allocated by the board for specific projects. If they have any remaining funds left over after they bid those projects or quoted them out, and they have remaining funds, they would like to spend those on other items. As you can see from the information from Mount Airy City Schools, they have savings in current special capital projects in this fiscal year for projects at Jones Intermediate, Mount Airy Middle School, as well as Tharrington Primary School. Their total savings, as you can see there, are at $199,176. They're asking that these, that this amount be transferred into these other project areas. One is the ongoing HVAC project at Mount Airy High School, paving at Tharrington Primary School, funds for a middle school and high school track and tennis court project, security doors at Tharrington Primary, and security doors at Jones Intermediate School. And the reallocation comes to the $199,176 that they show as savings in the information above. They are suspending some of these projects this spring because there are no children on campus and wish to allocate most of these funds to these other projects which they have allocated or they have identified as priorities. And they want to, as you know, they'd like to use these funds as they state there at the bottom before June 30th. The only other information I'll give you is I've been asked this question by a couple of board members, is with the current economic situation, these capital projects are funded with sales tax dollars. And of course, right now, sales tax is an issue for every local government as well as the state government. The latest information I received from the league, which was near the end of March, is they were projecting for the months of April through June of this current year, the quarter that we are in currently, that we would be looking anywhere from a 10% to 20% loss in sales tax revenue. That's either what they would consider severe at 10% or most conservative at 20%. And of course, there's also negative growth projected for the following two quarters and potential leveling out in the January-July timeframe next year. I just thought I would mention that because, you know, we make budget estimates each year. These special capital projects are based, is based on those projections. And of course, we're going to undoubtedly come in under what we projected. Typically, I think in a given year, and I think this current fiscal year, you know, we budgeted what we collected last year plus 3%. So for this particular quarter that we're in now, we're looking at a 10% to 20% projected loss. And I just wanted to mention that because those funds, if they don't come in, then if these projects are spent in full, those funds will probably have to be subsidized out of the general fund.
I understand.
And that's basically the proposal. I'll be happy to answer any questions I can.
Well, I have a couple of questions for you. I hope Commissioner Tucker and Harris, y'all was able to hear Chris' time on all this, and y'all think you have it in front of you. You should. Last meeting, we allowed, we voted to give them $350,000 for the high school HVAC.
Yes, they'd asked for some additional funds to take care of some items identified in that geothermal study they performed.
And so now they're throwing another $50,000 the same way for the high school.
Additional funds towards that, yeah, another phase of that.
Does any of this, they proposed the new, the balance of these things, paving and track, tennis courts and doors, such as, has any of that been for next year's budget requests that they've sent in? Is any of these things, they want to move anything up, or is it going to take away?
I don't, you know, I don't have that in front of me. I can't say with any certainty, but my recollection is no, but I could be mistaken.
So these are just things that they, evidently, they say they're priority now, but they're not in next year's budget that they've already presented to you for capital projects?
Well, I can't say that with 100% certainty.
You can't say for sure right now.
I don't have it in front of me.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I wasn't able to hear that completely. Chris, the question is for you, Mr. County Manager. Are these funds, funds that were left over from a designated project previously granted?
They are savings that they've identified in their current year's special capital allocations from the county.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, again, if I can take the liberty, I'll just make a comment if I can.
Yes, go ahead.
I think we're on a different track here. I think COVID-19 is going to leave us with some challenges that's going to make us do things that are not norm, not normal. These are monies that previously we just simply usually say to folks, yeah, you've had some leftover, go ahead and spend it on something else, but considering we're going to have to take pause in kind of a little time here to catch our breath as county commissioners to see where we are and just what kind of situations we're going to face and what our budget year is going to look like for not only this school system, but the other two and many other departments. You know, unless they've got a burning emergency, I'm going to say we might pause and take a little different road on what has been our normal, just to say yes to all those requests for leftover fundings. And I would like to have a little more detail about, you know, exactly where they think they need it. And I understood you, Chris, to say you didn't have those details.
Not in front of me for what's been requested for next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Harris, any questions or comment?
Well, it looks, it looks like they had a total of about $750,000 or $700,000 in special capital outlay last year in the budget. Is that correct, Chris?
That sounds accurate, yes.
It's on this sheet here, money allocated, which is, yeah, so it's 200, 350, and 350, $700,000. And, or 780, I think, maybe. The, I'd say this, you know, I want to commend Mount Airy City Schools for coming in way under these projections and not using the usual motives of spending everything that they have in fear that if they don't, then they might be penalized down the road if they don't spend these allocations. I will agree with Commissioner Tucker that, you know, there's some considerations that we haven't faced before in this county in regards to, you know, revenue and revenue projections going forward and those sorts of things. You know, I'll be honest with you, while I commend Mount Airy City Schools for coming in under budget, and I certainly don't want to penalize them going forward, you know, middle school track and high school tennis courts or whatever there, you know, that's not real high on my list of priorities in a climate that we're in, that we're currently in. So, you know, I'd probably just recommend that these folks resubmit these in the coming year's budget, and I think the board needs to make a notation of Mount Airy's good stewardship of taxpayers' money in these special capital projects and take a fresh look at it going forward. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Golewens, you agree with what's been said? Commissioner Marion?
I agree.
I think if you, if you look at anything on there, probably the security or the security doors, the safety of our kids. The safety of our kids is probably something that, that would be priority for me, and I, I believe that we've got to be careful.
It appears to me, Chris, that the board would like to defer on this decision to another time with the reason so stated.
Yes, I'll pass that along tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next item is a memo from Don Mitchell following up on the recent discussion about a stair, stairs and a handicap ramp to connect the service center property to the government center property. Following discussion, the board felt like the cost for doing so were excessive and asked Don to look at coming up with some options to fence that property line, which is located on the hill, which in the right conditions can be unsafe for folks, especially when it's wet or there's ice or snow on the ground, and it would prevent folks from traveling back and forth up that grass hill. Don has gotten one quote in to date. You can see it here. It would be the length of the fence would be 540 feet. It would be a black chain link fence, and the estimate is $9,450. And what he's requesting tonight, especially since we'll have a month before the next meeting, is asking for the board's permission to move forward with this project, and he's going to receive additional quotes from additional contractors, but with a cap to spend no more than the quote we have here, which is $9,450.
All night long, we've been going, just hopping on a little bit backwards about motions and discussions, but I'm going to go ahead and ask if there's any questions or discussions beforehand. And make sure you understand. Commissioner Harris?
No, I'm good.
You're good? Commissioner Tucker?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I understood that, and I'm good.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I'll make a motion.
The motion from Commissioner Golewens is.
That we, that we put the fence along that hill and not $9,450.
I have a motion from Commissioner Golewens, looking for a second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Marion. Is there any more discussion or correction?
I'd just like to add for anyone that don't know that that bid is also includes removing the existing fence. That's, that's there now. And installing a new fence.
Is that a question?
No, I'm just stating it that.
It does include removal?
Yes.
Okay. I think everybody understands that they've probably read it better than I did. All right, we have a motion and a second that we will go up to $9,450 on the black six-foot tall fence for the whole length of the property. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 And that sounds unanimous. Chris and Don, okay?
Next item is an update on boards and commissions related to appointments and reappointments, and I'll ask Nathan Walz to come up this time and discuss this information with the board.
All right, good evening, guys. Van and Eddie, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. And I can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, good. Just want to read off some of these considerations for reappointments and appointments. Agriculture Advisory Board for the voluntary agricultural district would like to reappoint Mark Johnson and Travis Love and appoint Preston Cave to fill a position that has been vacated. Those terms are for three years. We'd like to take a vote on that to start with.
Looking for a motion to approve the three gentlemen on the Animal Control Advisory Board. Looking for a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Motion from Commissioner Harris, second from Commissioner Golewens. Any questions pertaining to these appointments? If none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That's unanimous. Nathan?
On the Surrey Aging Planning Committee, reappointments are needed for Carmen Long, Tom Bachman, Joanne Arons, and Daniel White. The terms are for three years.
So that's for just our information.
Well, you can, you can vote on each of these except.
Oh, they're willing, they're willing to serve.
They are.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the reappointments. We're all inscribed.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Golewens that we reappoint Carmen Long, Tom Bachman, and Joanne Harris and Daniel White to the Surrey Aging Planning Committee. Do I need, I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Golewens. Any questions pertaining to these four individuals, reappointments? If none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That's unanimous also. Nathan?
All right. On the Animal Control Committee, a reappointment is needed for Tony Davis. Terms on the committee are usually for two years unless the board specifies a different length. She has liked to make a vote on that tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion to re, to appoint Tony Davis for the normal two-year term.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Harris, looking for a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second from Commissioner Tucker to reappoint Tony Davis to the Animal Control Committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous also. Nathan?
All right. On the Piedmont Triad Regional Council Workforce Development Board, a reappointment is needed for Andrew Wright. This term would be for two years.
Well, I read that Andrew Wright is willing to serve another 10 years. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion that we appoint Andrew, reappoint Andrew Wright to serve on the Piedmont Triad Regional Council Workforce Development Board. Looking for a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Marion. Any questions about Andrew White serving? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous also. Nathan?
All right. And the last piece of information, an appointment is needed by the end of June for Barbara Anderson's vacancy on the Partners Behavioral Health Management Board. Tammy Piles, their clerk, said that the board of county commissioners can provide a recommendation for this.
Well, I think I'm going to refer over to Commissioner Golewens on that. Commissioner Golewens said he's going to find us somebody between now and June to fill that position. I guess we're all in agreement to that, aren't we? He's willing to take that.
Good here, Mr. Chairman.
All right, all right.
I would request that the board amend my agenda to include one additional item that was emailed to the board earlier this afternoon, and it was a proclamation for the National Day of Prayer. V M Dalton, Reverend Dalton, if you remember from last year, requested the board adopt the proclamation. He's requesting it again. It's before you. It's identical, I believe, to the one that was passed last year. The National Day of Prayer will be on May the 7th, and depending on, you know, mass gathering restrictions at that time, I think Reverend Dalton is trying to determine whether he'll have a ceremony or if this will be something that he will just read on local radio stations and likewise. So I would ask for the board's consideration after proclamation.
Does Commissioner Tucker and Commissioner Harris have this proclamation in front of them?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Look at, I'll just go ahead and take action. I don't, I don't think we have any questions or.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the agenda and accept the proclamation for the Day of Prayer.
We go down one motion? Okay. We have a motion to amend the agenda and accept this proclamation from Reverend Dalton. I have that motion from Commissioner Marion, second from Commissioner Golewens. Any questions or discussions about amending the agenda to include this proclamation? If none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And that's unanimous also, Chris.
And finally, I'd just like to thank Martha Brennall and Patrick Jones from MIS Department for working very diligently the last few weeks to get this to meeting here and approve tonight. And I also want to thank the sheriff's office for being available not only here, but also at the service. And I also want to thank the sheriff's office for being available, not only here, but also at the service center tonight.
That's great, and I hope that gets in our minutes, because they, they can hear those thank yous. Martha can, she's with us. Y'all didn't know that. But the next item is county commissioners. If we have any general business, I'll, I'll begin with myself. I, I, we don't, we all know that we're in chartered territory. Everything is unusual, not like it used to be. I appreciate the commissioners doing what we do, that we don't get to sit in with each other as close when we do sit down. But I'm looking forward to sitting down with you on, on May the 14th, and we'll, we'll take care of all of our issues, especially the budget during this time. And who knows, we might like it so good, we won't do that in the rest of it. But we'll find out and see. But thank y'all for your patience, and I think we're all in this, I know we're all in this together, and I appreciate everybody's efforts. And, and we'll, we'll move along as hastily and as gradually as we can. And thank goodness, we've got a great county staff to, to take care of, take care of us. And, and we want to give them a lot of thanks, too. Manager, assistant manager, and all those that work under them. Mr. Marion, you have anything to add before we close?
Just everybody stay safe and healthy, and we shall overcome. This too shall pass, so.
Okay. Commissioner Goleens, anything you want to add before we close?
Please get him back on, and all of them sit down.
There we go. Looking, Commissioner Tucker, you have anything you want to add before we close?
I appreciate all you gentlemen in allowing us to remote in here. We've kept our social distance, looks like, and miss sitting down with you fellows. We have some tasks ahead of us. We all are aware of that. And I look forward to tackling them for the citizens of Surrey County. It's some challenging times, some unknown answers just yet. But we will work on it diligently. We're pleased to the citizens that we will buckle down here and do the very best we can, and I know all you fellows will do the same. And I look forward to getting back in person and getting to work on some of these issues real soon. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Harris, do you, would you say before closing?
Keep calm and carry on.
All right, that's great. Again, this is a new thing for us, and it looks like we got through it without much mumbling. So, thank you all. We're looking for a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
So, everybody's motioning, so Commissioner Goleens made the motion, Commissioner Marion seconded it. All in favor that we're going to adjourn, please say aye.
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 And that's unanimous also.
Great job, Martha.